It is the appointed time and we have a quorum. Welcome to the meeting, the public hearing of the Public Accounts Committee on Chapter Two of Report Number Eighty-Two of the Director of Audits on Emergency Dental Services and Elderly Dental Care Support. This is the third hearing. Attending in witnesses today are Professor Lo Chong Ma, Secretary for Health, Mr. Thomas Chang, Permanent Secretary, and Dr. Ronald Lem and King, Director of Health and their team. Today, we will continue with the hearing. As the previous meeting, there were three members who raised their hand who were yes to speak. They were Mr. Louis Lung, Ms. Yunis, Ms. Yunis Yong, Mr. Louis Lung, and Ms. Emma Wong. Now, Mr. Louis Lung will go first.
Thank you, Chairman. On the last occasion, we heard a lot from the government about whether the targets were met. I just want to clarify if my understanding is correct. The targets or the KPIs. According to the report, the figure is forty thousand each year. So which table or which paragraph are you referring to? Paragraph three point six, page thirty-two, paragraph three point six. The target is to provide outreach in dental care services to a target of at least forty-three thousand users per year. So how did you arrive as the figure of forty-three thousand service users per year? Having read the report, I mean, chapter three, my impression is mixed. During the two rounds of the program, ten NGOs were awarded the contract. So during the application process or the tender bidding process, it seems that they set the targets based on thousands of users. So the two, the ten NGOs were awarded the contracts for both service periods. So it seems the forty-three thousand service user target is one set by the departments yourselves. So in the next round of application, if there are more than ten NGOs joining the fray, if there are new competitors, if the combined target exceeds that of forty-three thousand, how would you select the NGOs in awarding the tender or contract? If my understanding is correct, it seems that the subsidy per head is just seven hundred twenty dollars. So I think you are not selecting the lowest bidder. Professor. Now, Note Thirty-One, it says the there were some sixty-six thousand six hundred residents or users in RCHEs or DEs. So the targets forty-three thousand then accounts for some sixty-five percent of the total number of users or residents. So that's how we set the target. Sixty-five percent of the total number of elderly people residing in DEs or RCHEs. Thank you. Mr. Lung. So what about my other question? If there are more than ten NGOs, which is exactly the number of tenders you can award, what if there are more than ten competitors and the capacity they provide is is an exceedance of forty-three thousand? Professor Lo. Now, under these ten NGOs, there are twenty-three outreach dental care teams. So each team can serve one thousand to two thousand service users depending on the scale of the team. So it's not the number of NGOs that's matter. It is the number of outreach servicing teams. Mr. Lung. Now, if the track record of the NGO is poor, we do see some NGOs failing to achieve the targets. Are there any penalty in place so that in so that in subsequent rounds of tendering, the NGO would be less likely to be awarded the tender? Dr. Ronald Lem, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Lung. Now, we provide subvention directly to the NGOs. And we would impose two requirements on the NGOs. First, the services are to be provided via an outreach model. So in each outreach team, there must be one, at least one dentist and one dental care professional. Now, because of the varying sizes of NGOs, we allow outreach teams to have more than that number of professionals in the team. So for large outreach teams, they can serve two thousand service users. So after vetting their proposals, we would set the targets for them in accordance to their capacity. So like Professor Lo said, the coverage would be sixty percent of the total number of residents in RCHEs. So that's how we arrived at the service targets of forty-three thousand service users. That's set in mind with the capacity of the NGOs. Now concerning what kind of NGOs we would allow to join the scheme, first of all, they need to have the capacity and the expertise. Second, under the tax inland revenue ordinance, they need to be non profiteering organizations. They need to be charitable organizations. Concerning the service targets, now, under the funding and service agreements we signed with the NGOs, a target would be set. The NGOs must strive to meet the targets or even exceed the targets, which is even more welcomed. The amount of subventions or subsidies would be given to the NGOs in accordance with the actual number of users served. Now, for NGOs which fail to reach the targets, we would consider the case individually. Let's say a NGO was unable to begin offering service sooner because they had difficulties hiring dentists. If that's the case, we would offer help to the NGO. And then we would even provide training for the dentists they hire. So if they can't meet the targets for, because of some challenges, we will offer them help. If it is the case that many RCHEs being reached out by the NGOs refused to join the program, we would try to understand the reasons and try to convince the RCHEs. Now, if the NGO still failed to meet the targets despite all the efforts, then since the subvention or the subsidies are provided according to the actual number of users served, now, at the beginning, we would just provide them with fifty percent of the subventions to get them started. Now, since we require a monthly report from the NGOs concerning the progress of their service, if they submit the reports late, we would find out the reasons and even issue warning letters. Now, if the performance of the NGO is seriously support, the government can terminate the contracts with the NGOs. But like we said before, we really want more NGOs to join the ODCP to provide services to more elderly people. Thank you. Ms. Lung.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lem, for your explanation. Now, this is a hypothetical question. If you look at Table Fourteen, NGOs A, C, and F, they exceeded their targets for consecutive years. They have outperformed themselves in terms of the targets set for them. For other NGOs, some fail to meet the targets. So in two thousand twenty-three and four, there was an overall exceedance in targets by nineteen percent. So if all NGOs are able to meet the targets or even exceed the targets, will that cause a budget overrun for you in terms of subvention? If that's the case, how would you deal with the additional requirements for funding? If everyone is doing so well and outperform themselves, then the approved estimates will not be sufficient to meet the funding requirements. Dr. Lem, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Lung. If the service providers exceed the targets, that is a very much welcome scenario. As mentioned by Professor Lo, our target is for the ODCP to cover at least sixty-five percent of the sixty five thousand or sixty-six thousand six hundred residents in RCHEs. Of course, we would like to cover them all if possible. In year two thousand twenty-three to four, except for two NGOs, all the other aides met the targets or even exceeded the targets. That's very ideal. So the reasons why the two NGOs failed to meet the targets, it was because in two thousand twenty-two and three, that was at the height of the epidemic. There were gathering ban and visitors were not allowed to enter RCHEs or DEs. And also, many colleagues and team members of the outreach team felt sick or work at home. So those were the main reasons why the targets were not met. In two thousand twenty-two to three, most of the NGOs were able to meet the targets or even exceed the targets. We do have sufficient funding to provide for the NGOs. Now, the latest revised estimates for year two thousand twenty-three to four is fifty-eight point nine million dollars. If that's still falls short, we have a mechanism to make up for the shortfall. We can apply for additional funding according to that mechanism. Mr. Lung, thank you. My next question relates to what the professor said on the seventh of May. The secretary said that measures will be implemented to ensure that all participating NGOs will fulfill their obligations under the Funding and Service Agreement. Professor Lo meant the requirement to submit reports regularly. So what measures are there to ensure that the NGOs are submitting their reports on time? Professor Lo. May I defer the question to Dr. Lo, Dr. Lem? Thank you, Mr. Lung. Now, concerning the periods covered by this report, in two thousand, from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three, that was still the COVID period. So we gave we exercised discretion concerning the submission of reports because everyone was so busy fighting the epidemic. After the epidemic, if the situation still persists, we will find out why this is so. And according to the FSA, for late submission of reports, besides issuance of warning letter, we can withhold these subventions until the report is submitted. For the most egregious case, we can terminate the contract. Ms. Lung, I know my time is up, but I still have one more question. Paragraph three point three five. Now, the funding for elderly healthcare voucher was three hundred forty million dollars. And on average, each transaction concerning dental services for elderly people was one thousand eight hundred dollars. Now, referring to the annex, now, the application amounts for elderly healthcare voucher spans on dental healthcare services provided by the private sector was two hundred eighty-seven million dollars. So on average, nine hundred seventy dollars per case. Now, so during the four years between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two, the average increase was twenty-two percent in terms of the application amount. So it exceeded the increase, annual increase of the Consumer Price Index. That's just five percent. So what is the reason that the average application amount exceeds that of the increase in Consumer Price Index? Professor. Well, there is not a standard rate charged by dentist. It is a it is an agreement between the dentist and the patient. The service provided to each patient is different. There are different treatments, simple ones and complicated ones. So the application amount is just an average. It's very difficult to pack the amount spent on dental services with inflation.
So I have concluded all my questions, but yesterday, Ms. Gan Wei Man had to do a visit and she had issued some questions, sent me some questions and had me to ask the questions on her behalf. So if you permit, may I ask those questions on her behalf? Well, if you want to ask on her behalf, maybe you can skip a turn. It's not my question. Well, you can go through her questions, digest them, and then ask Ms. Yong Hui Yan. Coming back to the Outreach Dental Care Plan, we have the number of participants and service providers. We do have some that are at a relatively low level. So looking at paragraph three point two, between twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, the Outreach Care Plan so had so provided service to thirty-nine thousand recipients. So on average, each case, each patient would receive twelve hundred dollars. So I think that includes polishing, scaling, dental crowns and so on. So referring to the document, page one-one-three, in paragraph eight, it says that for each outreach team, there is one dentist and one dental surgery assistant. So looking at the table fifteen and so on. So all these outreach teams, do they have one dentist and one dental surgery assistant? That's the first question. Then, second, this dentist and dental surgery assistant, how many cases do they handle? Dr. Lem? Yes, our clause requires that all outreach teams at least need to have one dentist plus one dental assistant to provide outreach service. And of course, they need the adequate, the appropriate equipment. So when they go visit any elderly care home, these two professionals have to be present for dental examination or treatment. I'd like to ask the fees. These resources are given to the dentist and their assistant. How is it divided? Dr. Lem? Our resources are assigned to the NGO according to the contract, and the payment is made according to the number of services provided. So the calculation, is it the number of care recipients or dental service recipients? We calculated based on the number of dental service recipients. For example, each patient that received a service, they receive on average seven hundred dollars treatment, but there is an adjustment every now and then, and we, if necessary, they also have transportation or consultation fees provided. In other words, the more services they provide, the more they receive, the more they claim. Uh, that's it's not a profit. It's not a for-profit activity. It depends on the number of care recipients that receive professional services. So I want to understand for the outreach team, what is the incentive for them to provide more services or to actively seek residential care homes to receive services? Dr. Lem? Well, incentivizing or encouraging more NGOs, it requires effort. First of all, we need to identify these organizations. They need to have a dental clinic. If they don't even have a dentist, they are not qualified. So regarding market investigation, we need to work with other agencies, Social Welfare Department, the dental college, and so on. Our understanding is there are at least twenty-eight NGOs that have dental clinics. And secondly, we invite them and introduce them to the plan. Uh, so whether it is for their image or or the services provided to elderly, these NGOs have a mission to serve society. So after these presentations, we also have some flexibility or encouragement, incentives. If they can form an outreach team, if they have a dentist and a dental assistant, if they have, if they can form a team to serve one thousand patients, they can make the initiative to make proposals, service proposals. And before we implement the plan, we can contact the residential care home and encourage them to join the scheme or the dentists or dental staff, they need training. We can provide that as well as long as they make the request. So through this cooperation, we can minimize their manpower requirements. They don't need to recruit on a large scale. And we hope that they can feel that we are their partner and our subvention is actually larger than Social Welfare Department, CSSA, and the reason why it's the dental subvention is higher than the CSSA. When you look at the scheme, it's four hundred ninety dollars, and now our subvention is more than seven hundred dollars. So we hope that this financial incentive can encourage these NGOs to participate. Well, referring to Table Fourteen, we want to focus on the low participation rate, including item G and I. And I see the audit report has given an explanation. And Dr. Lem has also given an explanation because in two thousand twenty-two, there was COVID. So the teams could not provide services, but if you look at the recovery rate in item G, for example, in twenty-two, from twenty percent, it improved to sixty percent for item G and for item I, it's still at a low level. So what's the reason for that? Why can't they recover? Have you looked into it? Have you reviewed their situation? In the past, they were okay. And between twenty seventeen and nineteen, it was more than a hundred percent. And in twenty nineteen, twenty, it was ninety-five percent, but then it dropped after, after that. And it's standing at thirty-two percent. That's not an ideal situation. So what's up with item I? They, you can't blame COVID. Why is their recovery rate so low? Dr. Lem? Regarding I, item I, in the year twenty-three, twenty-four, the elderly care home, whether there are patient visitor restrictions or meeting restrictions, it extended to twenty-fifth of March, twenty twenty-three. So it's almost a quarter, a one quarter of the time where they were under COVID restrictions. But after March, we looked into item I, the NGO. First of all, it's not a large scale. So their outreach team service targets were roughly two thousand people. That was their goal. They were a small scale. And they also encountered staff turnover. They had to recruit staff. They had to contact the elderly homes because the elderly homes also needed time to recover. So that's why when they resumed the services, they started late. For example, I said just now, the NGO had to recruit a dental surgery assistant. They had difficulty doing so. It took quite a while, and we had to intervene. And we were finally able to recruit one staff member, and we had to provide training because dental services for elderly are slightly different from a regular adult. The difficulty, the technical difficulty is higher. So for all, for various reasons, in twenty-three, twenty-four, they started later than normal by five months in providing outreach services. But regardless, we still have to commend their efforts because they were able to meet forty-four percent, almost half the target level. And even though they have difficulties, we still appreciate their participation. Now, I'm aware in paragraph three point five, they have invited NGOs to participate by mail. So they require the NGOs to have a clinic. They need to have a dentist and an assistant. So I want to ask, are they active in these kinds of service provision proposals? Service provision proposals? For example, in Samsai Pole, you have two and other districts, you might have two or three. Outreach teams. So each district, what is the participation rate? How many of them? What's the number of proposal letters? Uh do you have any choice or is there no choice? Is it just, are you just limited to one or two NGOs to choose from? Doctor Lam? The government requirement is. They need to be able to form an outreach team and each team needs to have a dentist and a dental assistant. And they need to be able to serve a thousand or two thousand. So we allow the twenty eight NGOs to submit proposals. And of course, we will have interviews and meetings with them, but unfortunately. Only eleven chose to participate. They expressed an interest to participate. And these seventeen NGOs, we allow them to propose how many. Patients they can serve and they have to list. They need to serve at least five different districts. There are eighteen districts in Hong Kong. They can. Highlight which districts they want to serve and they can come up with a priority list and. When we have a final proposal, we can. Assign the work and to ensure that each district ha- can receive service. So all eighteen districts are covered and. The distribution of elderly care home are different in the different districts. Some have more, some less. So we try to balance it out and if they have more elderly care homes. They have a higher percentage and even if the percentage is same, they will still have more patients. So we try to even it out. Well, in that case, some care homes. They might have. NGOs that have signed up to serve those care homes. Let's say I want to serve Wan Chai. I have a clinic in Wan Chai. My doctor, my my dentist is in Wan Chai. But if you s- send them off to Changzhou, they might be reluctant to do so. They might not have the staff to. Do so. So that might lead to low participation. So I understand that. You are understaffed. So how do you encourage more NGOs to participate? For example, after this audit report. Are there any changes we can make to induce, to encourage? More outreach teams to serve their districts? Of course, uh there are more elderly in Samsai Pole, they might need more services. So how can you fine tune the system so that more outreach teams participate and? Uh how 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 do you raise their enthusiasm? Well, thank you for the question. That's exactly why in May, in the beginning of May. There were seventeen NGOs that did not participate. We did a survey and we're still compiling the data. We see that forty one percent, seven NGOs, their reply was that. The major reason was staff. They were understaffed. They were not able to delegate. Work to an outreach team. Finances, equipment were also an area of concern. Because when you do outreach work, you need specialized equipment. They might. Not have that equipment and they might not want to invest and procure that equipment. The NGOs. Uh dental care is only one aspect of service they provide. They might have other services. So they might not want to focus exclusively on dental care. So that's what we understand right now. So we will look into it further. We can see whether there can be other forms of subsidies for equipment and when it's appropriate. We will come up with an overall plan to encourage the non-participants. And we will also report back to Legco uh in an appropriate time. No further question? Mister Look Zhong Hong. I have some basic questions. Items A to J, these NGOs. Why do you not disclose the names? Which table are you referring to? Table fifteen and fourteen NGOs A to J. Some have a stellar performance, A C F during COVID, they had exceeded targets. I want to commend them, but I don't know who they are. I I'd like them to share their experience. And those who are underperforming G and I. They are not as proactive and what what's their explanation? It's hard to follow up or the media might want to follow up and some institutions. Or they they might be underperforming and if you don't disclose their names. Then you give people other NGOs a bad name. There were only two or three that did a poor job. So what is that? Is that a cost, that a custom, a habit that you don't disclose names? Could you, is there any mechanism? To retrieve this information, the audit commission? We are looking at value for money, the three Gs. We are not. Targeting the NGOs so we don't disclose names. Now, if you require disclosure. Well, I would, you'd have to ask uh health department to whether you could do so in private. This involves the right to know and value for money considerations. We want to know who's done a good job and who hasn't. When you. When you keep it confidential, we can't comment and we can't uh. Follow up. Uh I don't think it's a big secret. I'd like to hear from a health department or what. Can you disclose their names? Doctor Lam? Well, there are two considerations. One. The outreach team NGOs, it's not a high number. And. Currently. We are concerned that a lot of NGOs, they. Hope. To serve the elderly through this scheme, but. When. They don't reach targets, they don't want to be criticized. So that might affect their morale and the desire to participate. So then we would have even less NGOs willing to participate. So it's a matter of balancing. If you really want to know their names, we can consult. The Justice Department and we can supplement this information after the meeting.
Professor Lo, Chairman, I would like to supplement and remind members that. The audit report covers the period from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. And during these three years, some NGOs cannot reach the targets, but I would like to emphasize that that was the COVID period. It seems that some people have forgotten that we were experienced COVID then. And then dental treatment is a very high-risk treatment. And the R C H E's refused to have outreach dental service during that time. So this is a very important point that we have to bear in mind. If we look at the figures, please bear that in mind. On the other hand, the NGOs. They have to recruit a dentist and a dental assistants. And they also face difficulty in the recruitment exercises because of the remuneration package. For the outreach service to the R C H E's. They are facing difficulties because they have to bring along with them certain equipment. So the dentist and the. Assistants, they actually have a passion for the service. I've actually have resisted the R C H E's and see how they perform and deliver their service. Actually, they can go and practice in the private sector and they can earn more. Yet they choose to serve for the outreach teams. So I do appreciate that they have difficulty in recruiting dentists, you know, and staff for the outreach service. So I hope you would appreciate the difficulty faced by the NGOs. It is not easy for them to find dentists. And assistants for the service. Thank you. Mister Look.
Chairman, I appreciate the secretary's points. Those few years, uh we were hit by COVID. And there were some restrictions, but then some NGOs have overachieved their targets. And yet some are not performing that well.
Well, I'm not trying to target a certain NGO. And I think that transparency and accountability. Should not affect them in serving the community. Actually, I would like to thank the NGOs for. Conducting the service. So I would like to thank the dentists and the nurses involved. They may be serving in other clinics and not necessary for the outreach service. And I know that they earn less. Because of this service instead of practicing in the private sector. Well, I don't think this is a very secretive reason, so I hope the administration and go back and reconsider. Well, I'm not trying to get to the very bottom of it, but I think if you disclose the information, maybe it will be an incentive. Well, for those NGOs who are doing well, we would like to commend them, but for the. NGOs who are not performing that well, maybe we want to exercise some pressure so that they can perform better. I would now like to move on to paragraph three point ten, item C. It says that if an NGO. Had to refund and any overpayment amount to the government if it could not achieve fifty percent of the proposed target number of service users and any surplus. So I would like to know the exact meaning of this uh paragraph. So for the annual allocation, you have to take into account the. Number of persons who receive the service and maybe the administration can correct me. Does the NGO receive some administrative expenses as well? So how are you going to recall the payment? If there is overpayment. So do you have specific figures concerning overpayment? That has been refunded. Doctor Ranola, uh chairman, maybe I'll give an uh overview first. You know, on the allocation of resources. Actually, if you go to page thirty one. The note twenty nine. You can see that there are three elements for the payment. So every year, there is an expenses of seven hundred thirty dollars per user. And then there may be expenses for further treatment. So that means if they work harder, the NGO, they will get more payment. So we have made reference to the dental care grounds under the C S S A and also the ceiling there. Thirdly, sometimes the dental services cannot be conducted. At the R C H E's and we have to do so at the dental clinic. And then in those circumstances, we will also have transportation costs and accommodation costs reimbursed to the NGO involved. So these are the supplementary information. For the rest, I would defer to the director. Doctor Ranola.
Well, Chairman, we don't have extra administrative costs that has to be buried. As the secretary has pointed out, if we go to note twenty nine. You can see how the fees are calculated and the grants are calculated. Mister Look.
Chairman, so in other words, there is no administrative cost and I'm glad to hear that. It's a reasonable arrangement. But for the O D C P service, it's sad that you don't have a high participation rate of the NGOs. Because some elderly people will not be able to receive service under the outreach. Dental care program. In paragraph three point twelve, there is a conclusion. It indicated that the low participation rate may not be district specific. And then also it stated that for the thirty seven R C H E's, that is about um forty percent of them. They have been assigned to the NGO G and yet none of them participated in the O D C P. Yet for NGO J, they have been allocated forty eight R C H E's, that's fifty percent of the R C H E's in total. But the participation ratio rate is eighty one percent. So have you looked into the reasons for that? Uh it is the same period that is covered under COVID, but the participation rate can differ so much. Between the NGOs. Why is there such a big difference? I can't figure that out. And I don't see any information from the paper on this. Well, I would like to ask whether the director of audit. Uh have you found out the reasons why? Same for the Department of Health. Have you looked into why the reasons there is a big difference between the participation rate? Because one of them is doing so well despite all COVID. Professor Lam? Director of order?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, the reasons we have found out are listed in the report. It is, for example. Listed in paragraph three point nine and I have nothing else to supplement. I would defer to the department. Well, Secretary, Chairman, if you look at three point ten paragraph, you can see that we have responded to the audit inquiry. In, on page forty three, it is three point one ten F. We are focusing on NGO G and I. We actually had convened a meeting with NGO I. They said that they have difficulties in recruiting staff. They have professional manpower shortage and they cannot resume the service. So that's why they have transferred one of the R C H E's to another NGO for provision of service. For NGO G, it is a relatively small NGO. And for the dental hygienists and the dentists that they recruit are actually in single-digit number. So if there is staff wastage, they will not be able to conduct outreach service. So the impact on them is between zero and one. So that means if they have one staff left, they will not be able to provide the outreach service at all. We have had a meeting with them because it is small in size and yet they endeavor to provide service to the public. That's why we want to encourage them to go for service enhancement. Uh for example, to recruit dentists and also the assistants. So that's why for a certain period of time, this particular NGO has not been able to serve the R C H E's. Mister Look. So that means for some NGOs, they have difficulty in recruiting staff and that's understandable. And I think that should be stated in the audit report and then it will be fair to the NGO concerned.
But for NGO I. It is stated that the R C H E's and the D E's refuse their service. So why is that some R C H E's are willing to receive outreach service, but in this particular case. This NGO has been rejected by the R C H E's. What are the reasons? Doctor Rondo Lam, they are responsible for providing service in the whole district. So how come that? Some R C H E's would reject their service? Doctor Lam?
Well, for the R C H E's, the impact on them because of COVID would differ. Well, some of the R C H E's has to be closed entirely because of the COVID situation and they have to. Move their residence elsewhere. So it is difficult to. Say why uh a particular R C H E would receive or refuse the surface. For the NGOs, they also have the different policies. Well, some of them, uh because of anti epidemic measures. They have limitations and they do not want to assign their.
they have limitations and they do not want to assign their staff for outreach service so as to expose them, uh, to the epidemic. That's why they don't run the outreach service and the service was terminated intermittently. Well, for some NGOs, they may arrange for their staff to have, uh, the COVID test and you have the negative result, then they would do the outreach service. Uh, but then sometimes the RCHs may face a different circumstances. For NGO I, they have one outreach team, but the dentist and the assistant both fell sick. That's why they have to cease the service. So there are actually different reasons affecting the RCHs and the NGOs. And also because of the anti epidemic measures and some of their staff may get infected. So that's why, um, the situation would be differ. But with the pandemic situation easing, they have resumed the outreach service. Mister Lo? Well, I have no further follow-up. Thank you. Mister Louis Long? You want to ask question on behalf of Miss Carmen Ken?
Yes, Chairman, if you allow. Miss Ken has a question on part three. I would raise it on her behalf. She referred to page forty-nine of the report. Three point three-six. It says that the audit has, um, interviewed some of the, uh, NGOs and found that forty-one of the dentists on the list and about four of them do not allow the users to use the, um, healthcare voucher. So that's why her question is, how many dentists actually participate in the service? And then also, on average, every year, how many dentists try to withdraw from the scheme? And what are the reasons for withdrawal? The third question, how will the government ensure that you will time to update a list of dentists who are enrolled in EHVS so as to inform the elderly? And also how to encourage the elderly to use the elderly healthcare voucher scheme for dental service? Professor Lo?
Well, I want to point out that our response is stated in paragraph three point thirty-seven. That is a response from the Director of Health. So biannually, we will try to update the database. For the remaining questions, I would defer it to Doctor Rondo Lam.
Doctor Lam? Thank you, Chairman. So for the dentists withdrawing from the scheme annually, we may have to provide that, uh, later after the meeting. And also the number of dentists participating in the scheme. I would like to supplement that, uh, for the updating exercise, there are several measures underway. First, we update the database. We try to identify dentists who have not provided the information. Then we will target at them and contact them to see whether they want to withdraw from the scheme or maybe they are no longer working for, um, the organization concerned. And every two years, we would regularly send emails to the dentists involved and ask them if there is any changes concerning their enrollment information. Maybe they have retired, they have left the organization, then ask them to let us know. Thirdly, we also collaborate with the Hong Kong Dental Association. And then every year during their annual meeting and seminar, we try to introduce information about the EHVS and that it can be used for dental service. And then we will also liaise with the, uh, dentist association so that when they organize activities, we would ask them to provide, um, information on how the dentists can participate in the scheme. We may set up kiosks. Also, we would, um, update the participation, uh, information and the way. Now there is an automatic system that they can enroll. Uh, they can also make payments through an electronic system through the e-Health. Thank you, Chairman. Mister Long?
Well, on behalf of Miss Carmen Ken, I would have a follow-up question. Well, I heard that during the meetings of the dentists, you would encourage your dentist to join the scheme. But as a whole, in Hong Kong, we are lacking dentists. So for the healthcare voucher scheme, you only have forty-one dentists enrolling. So what specific measures can you introduce to encourage the dentist to join so that you can expand the list of participating dentists? Professor Lo?
Well, Chairman, I would like to rectify one point. It is not that only forty-one dentists are in the EHVS list. If you look at table nineteen, in twenty-twenty-three, uh, we have two thousand one hundred forty-one dentists practicing in the private sector and about seventy percent of them, that is one thousand four hundred seventy-seven, are in the list enrolled in EHVS. However, uh, by the time the director of audit tried to interview the forty-one dentists on the EHVS list, um, they find that four dentists no longer allow the patients to use the vouchers under EHVS. That is what I want to supplement. Doctor Lam?
Well, Chairman, uh, we have the figures. If we compare twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, January, in these two years, as the secretary has pointed out, if you refer to table nineteen on page forty-nine, in twenty-twenty-three, uh, the number of dentists enrolled in the elderly healthcare voucher scheme is one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven. In twenty-twenty-four, up to January, it is one thousand seven hundred and forty-two. So we have five dentists less. And then every year, we also have dentists retiring. So the figure, uh, is decreasing mainly due to these reasons. Mister Long?
Well, I'm just asking follow-up on behalf of Miss Carmen Ken. So I have not really read, uh, table nineteen. I have made a mistake. Actually, the forty-one dentists are only, um, enquired anonymously by the Director of Audit. So I just want to make a correction. Miss Yung Huiyan?
Uh, Chairman, uh, a question on the EHVS. I noticed that, um, the list of dentists on the list have been updated in the past. Some people have said that the amount of voucher is small and it is not sufficient uh, because the removal of a tube is more than five thousand dollars. But this year, we noticed that there is a new scheme. You have a EHVS, a Greater Bay Area pilot scheme. And under the scheme, you have the, uh, charges and they are guaranteed. And also you have very stringent monitoring. So I would like to know for the GPA pilot scheme, you actually give an option for the elderly to go to the Greater Bay Area for dental service and that would be cheaper. So I want to know, how can you ensure that the service in Hong Kong can also reduce in cost and be more transparent? Is that possible?
Professor Lo? From table nineteen, you can see that from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three, despite the epidemic, the number of dentists enrolled in EHVS has increased by four hundred and thirty, representing a forty percent increase to one thousand four hundred seventy-seven in two thousand twenty-three. It shows that the dentists are very passionate in joining the program. And the participation from dentists in the private sector has increased from fifty-seven percent to sixty-nine percent. So that's very encouraging. On whether the healthcare voucher is sufficient to cover the treatment costs of dental services, it really depends on the treatment provided. Now we stress that in terms of dental care, prevention is more important than treatment. So concerning preventive care services like scaling and polishing surfaces, these services should be covered. And concerning the charge, the private sector dental service providers have their own fees. So elderly people, elderly patients should decide on their own whether they can afford the price. Now we have nine dental clinics covered in the GPA where elderly people can use health healthcare voucher to get dental healthcare services. And we have two such clinics near Hong, very near to Hong Kong in Shenzhen. So with this scheme, Hong Kong residents, including elderly people, can gain access to dental care services in the GPA with the healthcare voucher. Now we understand that the dental care services come with a lower charge in the mainland cities in the GPA compared with Hong Kong. So that's extra options provided to our patients, given the shortage of dentists in Hong Kong. But given the existing market mechanism, we don't have the power to set a charge for the private sector. Miss Yung? In Q three this year, we are going to have the GPA pilot scheme for using EHVS on dental healthcare services. So the secretary said nine healthcare organizations have enrolled in the scheme. So can you provide us with a list of those organizations? Secretary?
The nine medical organizations all provide dental healthcare, dental care services. The scales vary. There are two clinics which are, which specialize in dental care. Now we know that the other clinics also have scalable, um, dentist force, but we don't have a list of, um, those dentists. And those medical organizations are serving the residents in their own cities as well. They are not providing, uh, care only for Hong Kong people. So patients from Hong Kong need to make a booking in accordance with the existing arrangements in those dental clinics or hospitals. Now in terms of epic, in terms of appointments, making an appointment, patients can make use of electronic means to make a booking. So I urge elderly patients to make a booking first before going to those hospitals and clinics. So what about the number of complaints concerning, um, the abuse of EHVS by dental clinics?
Doctor Lam? Thank you. We have a mechanism to review the system and we would conduct random checking. We would spot any irregular transaction under the EHVS. And also we would follow up on media reports on abuse. Now under this mechanism, we have conducted review or audits on some six hundred thousand transactions under EHVS. Now concerning dentists, there were fifth, some fifty-two thousand transactions which we audited. It accounted for eight point seven percent of the total number of cases audited. So among the audited cases, some five thousand six hundred cases accounting for less than one percent involve impropriety. Now concerning impropriety involving dentists, um, there were four hundred seventeen. So it counts for zero point seven nine percent of the cases audited. Miss Yung? So for those dentists who were found to be problematic, how will you deal with them? Will they be kept on the list? Doctor Lam? Thank you, Chairman. It depends on the impropriety involved. Some are honest mistake, an erroneous amount of fee was charged to the patient. For those case, we would just claw back the amount overcharged. For other cases, it involves deception. Somehow the patients have already passed away, but still there is a transaction. So for those cases, we would pass them on to the police and the dental council for disciplinary actions. In any event, if the dentists cause a negative impact on the HVS, we would remove them from the scheme. Miss Yung? How often do you conduct that audit? Do you conduct regular audits to ensure that, um, the elderly people are not being exploited? Doctor Lam? We conduct an annual audit. Miss Yung? So are you, are there any stink operation to ensure that the dentists are not exploiting the HVS? Director? Now the existing mechanism is very effective. We follow up on any complaints and also media reports. Stink operations are more challenging because it may seem like a fishing approach, um, of investigation. And you have to, and that's not very effective. So we would stick to the existing mechanism. No follow-up question? Any more members who have questions concerning part three? If not, we move, we will move on to part four. Mister Evan Wong, please. Thank you, Chairman. Part four, my first question is on four point eleven B two. Now since January, uh, February two thousand twenty-four, the Health Bureau has been conducting checks on ineligible cases. So how many cases were found to be ineligible? Paragraph four point eleven B. Uh, Deputy Secretary? Thank you. In four point one-one B, we conduct checks on a sampling basis. Now we have conducted another twenty-three rounds of checks and we found that three hundred ninety-four, among the three hundred ninety-four patients surveyed, eleven have used the EHVS or the, or elderly dental assistance program, but they did not receive any, um, denture service. So do you think, um, there is overlapping use of the service because the elderly people don't understand the nature of the programs? Deputy Secretary? Now we don't rule out this possibility because according, because under the ODCP, we only added the clause that there cannot be duplicated uses of the service only at the later stage. Mister Wong? I understand, but you also have to understand that You also have to understand that the general public. Doesn't read the small print on the contract, and they don't understand that they can't. Use both services. So if we can avoid duplicated use of the services, maybe we can. Maximize the. Usage of the resources. Deputy Secretary?
Now, I think it is best if we can disseminate this information. At first contact with the patients, so we will remind the. Organizations and the clinics to remind the patients that they cannot use the. They cannot use both services. Now, elderly people, elderly patients would be asked detailed questions. When they get the first appointments, for example, whether they need denture. So. It would be most effective if we remind the remark, uh the elderly pe- the elderly patients. At that stage. So when would you update your database? I think for registration, you would simply um take, you can simply make use of the identity card number to check if there are. Duplicate use. Now, under our existing mechanism, we don't conduct a check. Of verification immediately because the system doesn't support that. So when we conduct checks. We will select a sampling so, we will uh select a sample from the applicants and check. Check it against the record, for example, whether the. Patient is a beneficiary on the uh C S S A and also H O L A. Mister Wong?
Now, smartphones are very convenient nowadays. You simply need an app to. Check it. Of course, there may be security issue. But if you can. Upload the information of the patients as soon as possible. And make, and maybe you, you have to restrict access to it by the backend users. But maybe with with this app, you can avoid this issue. And there may be privacy and security issue, but at least with this system, um you will be notified of any. Eligible cases.
Deputy Secretary? There is a technical issue. If we have a remote. Terminal access at the service units. Since we have such a large number of service units, it would lead to a security. Loophole or risk. So we will have to check whether that is feasible technically, but I. Have heard doctor, uh Mister Wong's suggestion. Mister Wong, that's why I say there shouldn't be dual access to the system. It's just a one-way traffic. For example, if I file a report. Online to the police, I don't have access to the police database. I'm just giving my information to the police and the police would take any follow-up actions. So maybe this is the direction you can consider.
Deputy Secretary? We will study it after the meeting. But the technical issue may be quite, may be quite um prohibiting. Mister Wong? Four point one nine. Now, there's, there is a significant variation in the number of new cases taken up by dentists under the E D A P. From zero to three hundred eighteen. So all this examined, the application forms of sixty new cases taken up by the two dentists with the largest number of new cases. So why the difference is so significant, zero and three hundred eighteen cases? Mister Adili? Thank you, Mister Wong. So we have actually investigated the. Situation. Now allow me to give you. Some background. Now, for an elderly patient to participate under the E D A P. Elderly Dental Assistance Program under the C C F, they have to apply or register at the service units. And they have to fill out some documents. And the service units would ensure that they are in, actually in need of a denture. And then they would ask for their preference in terms of dentist. The service units would tell the patients. Who are the dentists in the districts and the addresses of those dental clinics. So having filled out the form and indicated their preference, the service units would. Check with the system whether there are any remaining quotas. From those dentists preferred by the patient. Every dentist under the E D A P has to. Indicate in the system the available quotas for E D A P applicants. So and then if there is a free quota offered by the dentist, the service units would book. Would make a bill, make a booking for the patients with the dentist. So it's really up to the. Preference of the elderly patients. Ordinarily, the service units would not choose a dentist for the patients. Many service units would be reluctant to offer advice to the patients because if there are. Any issues arising from the surface. The service units would get a complaint. So there is a consensus among the service units. It would be the patients who indicates their preference. Now, according to the reports, uh there are two dentists who received the highest number of cases. Now, we have studied the cases in detail. Now, those two doctors have been enrolled under the E D A P for a very long period of time. Seven years and ten years respectively. The E D A P under C C F has only been implemented for ten years. So those two dentists are senior dentists under the E D A P. So with all the years of service, maybe they have built up a reputation among the elderly community. So that explains why they get the highest number of. Referrals of um of patients. So of course, we have checked whether some service units. Assign lots of cases to those dentists. And we found that that's not the case. There are lots of service units which refer cases to the dentist. One of the dentist. Received thirty, received referrals from thirty-five service units. The other dentist received referrals from thirty-six service units. So they are very experienced dentists under the E D A P. They have joined the program for seven to ten years. Now, there are dentists who received zero referrals. It may be because the dentist only enrolled under the E D A P for a short period of time and. There is a small amount of quota released.
I'd like to follow up on paragraph four point two nine A. We have some cases that run over four months and there is one case that ran for eight years. So I'd like to ask, what are the difficulties that lead to this long delay? These cases. The nature of these cases. The information is incomplete. So we have to repeatedly ask for information to cross-check against the case and. The back and forth communication will take time. But for exceptionally, exceptionally long cases, usually. Those close to eight years, these involve investigations or even legal procedures. So because of that. Uh it was unable to continue. Mister Wong? This is money for. Accounts receivable to the dentist. So four months is quite a long time, like, have you looked into wha- what's going on? Are there any? Procedures that we can simplify because this is one discouraging aspect. First of all. The majority. As the audit report says, the majority of cases, not typically when information is collected. Funds can be released between two to four months. We're now talking about a small number of cases. Their case has. Some uncertainties. We need to pursue more information or incomplete information, but the majority. Of funds are released in a timely manner. So for this additional information, since it involves public funds, so they have a responsibility. That the application. Is appropriate. We understand your concern. You want to speed up the procedure. So the propagating institution or the N G O. Will have to step up their game. We will set a deadline. So. We need everybody to hand in the documents at a certain time. We might have to remind them there's a deadline in two weeks or a month. You have to submit your missing information, and we might even need a further deadline. If you don't hand in the information. Then we can only release what we feel are reasonable. Uh funds. Now, if there's incomplete information and it's exceeded the deadline, we might not. Process that application because a lot of our dentists in the Community Care Fund. They. Might be very busy and not able to submit the information in a timely fashion. So we'd like everybody to step up their efforts. Mister Wong? What's the total number of cases? You said that the majority of cases are okay, but you have. Seventy-three out of hundred cases that uh have run into difficulties. So on average. What's the percentage of cases that? Where the funds are released between two to four months? Let me provide some figures. Let's look at table twenty-three. In table twenty-three. The Audit Commission. Has five hundred thirty-three cases, but uh some late cases, some six hundred and fourteen where they did not receive the applications. And if you look at that period. Twenty fifteen. Thirtieth of May to thirty-first of May. We have handled more than a hundred ten thousand cases. So now we see five hundred thirty-three cases. For five hundred thirty-three out of a hundred thousand, so that is less than one percent. So overall. The. Processing time is reasonable. I have no further follow-up. Next, Mister Long Hanbiu? Thank you, Chairman. The first question. Four point, paragraph four point five C. The applicants, when they hand in the application. They can indicate the dentist or clinic they wish to patronize and. In the interview, in the appointment uh schedule, they can see whether there is a vacancy. And can process their application. Their appointment. So. When you employ Institute A. To promote this scheme. Have you set a ceiling for the dentist's appointments? Thank you for the question. We did not set a ceiling for dentists. In our words. It's not. We're not handing out favors. Uh as I said just now. The applicant, the elderly uh can make their choice. They can pick the dentist that they want. It might be based on reputation, location. So that is how we process the appointments. And the service providers, the dentists or the dental clinics, their quota is. They. Offer whatever quotas available to them. Is that the case? That is correct. Well, if the elderly applicant. Did not indicate which dentist they prefer. Uh then how would the clinic or the service provider? Set up appointments? Now, I heard just now. They're not. Willing. To refer dentists. They would rather have the elderly choose the dentist. So. Well, how, how are they assisted in um pairing up these dentists? Well, the service provider typically avoids making referrals. Well, of course, the service provider. They might. Analyze the situation with the elderly uh patient. They might look at location. The, they might have a discussion with the elderly and help them make a choice. Mister Long? Paragraph four point six says the eligible elderly and. The subsidized institution. And it was ten percent, and by twenty twenty-three, it went up to twenty percent. So that is a low percentage. And in your opening speech on the seventh of May, you had said. You wanted to improve the service. So in the third quarter of this year, you would fine-tune the scheme. And you would. You would amend the conditions for uh scaling polishing. And dental crown services to encourage early intervention. So I want to understand. When elderly participate, when there's low participation, is it because? Is it because you weren't ready to provide these extra services in the third quarter? Is it because of that constraint and that led to a low participation? Is that, is that the case? Mister Li or Secretary? While the elderly dental care. Plan. It is a scheme to provide fa- false teeth. So in other words. Some elderly, if they don't need false teeth, they won't sign up for this scheme. They're, they're not. Approve, it's, they're not, it is not an appropriate service for them. So for, when you, when we talk about eligible uh elderly. It, it means their economic eligibility and other conditions. Uh they had not considered whether they need false teeth. And ten percent in twenty eighteen nineteen. It just indicated that ten percent of the participants uh signed up. And in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty percent, that means that one out of five people need false teeth. And in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty percent, that means that one out of five people need false teeth. But. If you compare that to the com- expanded services. They can have an annual visit, but this service is a one-off uh false teeth service. So when you consider the participation, you have to look at, you have to understand the conditions. We don't want a high participation rate. If there's a high participation, that means the dental. Uh the dental, the conditions of dental hygiene are very low. That means our prevention and treatment is very poor. If ninety percent uh of elderly need false teeth, that means their dental conditions are very poor. Any supplement? Well, just now, the secretary, I totally agree. I can share some information with you, for example. When you look at the oral uh dental hygiene investigation. Those elderly between sixty-five and seventy-four, if they need to have false teeth. In our oral survey, twenty-five percent of elderly. Would have uh needs for fa- false teeth. And if you look at the figures, it's twenty percent now. It is. Close to our survey results. Mister Wong. I'd like to follow up. On what was said just now. Let me see if my understanding is correct. The secretary on seventh of May said. In the third quarter of this year, they will fine-tune the elderly dental assistance plan and amend. The conditions for fa- false teeth. So if they don't make an application, they can still receive. Scaling. Uh examination, dental crowns and other services. So we're talking about. I think my question just now was that in the past, the participation of twenty percent was low. But we heard from the secretary that twenty percent is not low. But my question is. Uh in the third quarter. It is not related to false teeth. It is just. Using the dental assistance plan and providing more services. So aside from false there, false teeth were providing more services. Or is it still related to false teeth? In twenty twelve, when this scheme was implemented. They were only providing false teeth services. That's very clear. So if. The elderly had other needs, they would not receive the service. So we foresee. The change in the latter part of the year, we will expand the services. If they are financially eligible, they do not need false teeth, they can still. Receive treatment and that includes more preventative dental services. Thank you. Mister Wong. That's very good, Chairman. Uh prevention is better than a cure. So the next question is. Four point one three B and four point one four. Institute A, organizing A is required to maintain an update to list of service providers and. The list of participating service units, which is accessible by the public on the website set up by organization A for EDAP. And. According to guidelines issued by organization A, service units should not disclose information on list B. So. We had not required the applicants. To provide these click names and they were not given sufficient time to. Choose their preferred dental clinic. So have you considered that these lists? Are not confidential? Why can't you publish it on the web? For people who are preparing to receive service, they can. Uh make a reference to that. Why can't you enhance transparency? Well, our service provider, when designing the scheme. They had a concern that in the dentist professional guidelines, there's a charity or soliciting. A constraint or restriction. So they were worried that if there was a list with the dentist's information. It might contravene the soliciting for business uh. Guideline. So. We will work with the service provider and clarify this matter to see. Uh if we can come up with a list, if uh Exco is uh willing, uh we will be able to follow up. Well, I think you should move along uh in that direction. We have. A lot of information on the web. Whether it's hospitals, professional bodies, they have a members list. So in our modern day environment, this uh would not be considered as soliciting. So organizing A, organization A could look into this. So. On organization A. Paragraph four point two four says that there is a. Regularly reviewed number of participating dentists with organization A. And. The participation rate has been lower than forty percent. So. For dentists participating in this, have you set a guideline for them? Under secretary, thank you, Mister Wong. Participating in Community Care Fund, dentist uh service. It really depends on the dentist's intention, their business. And we feel that if we were to set a rigid guideline, it might not be practical. Because community care fund dentist. Uh they are like our other services. If they serve the private sector, they. Might have even more business. So community care dentist. They have a ceiling on prices they charge and they also have a CSSA quota. So for typical dentists, when they s- sign up with the community care scheme. They need, it is out of. Uh uh the intention to serve the community. So if we were to set a rigid guideline, it might not be practical. But working with our service provider, they are a profen- professional dental organization. So they are able to recruit more dentists uh to the scheme. So if you look at table twenty-two. From twenty eighteen to twenty-three, the number of dentists has been increasing. And in the last part of our table, in twenty twenty-three, we have the. Eight hundred eleven community care dentists and the latest figures are eight hundred forty-seven. So it is uh increasing. Thank you, Chairman.
Mister Lo. Chairman, a follow-up question. I noticed that the participation rate has been increasing. However, if we try to look at table nineteen. And compare the situation. I know it is two different schemes. But if you look at um table nineteen on the dentist who participated in healthcare voucher scheme. The participation rate is sixty-nine percent, but here for the EDAP, the participation rate is only thirty-eight percent. So there is a big difference. So for this uh CCF scheme. Is it because the fees imposed actually has caused some restrictions? And resulted in the low participation rate of dentists in the EDAP. Professor was low.
Chairman, I want to point out that these two schemes are actually quite different. As I have emphasized before, the EDAP only concerns the fitting of removable dentures. And the dentists, they actually uh specialize in different fields. The number of low participation rate is actually understandable because this one is only focusing on removable dentures. But for other dentists, they may be providing other specialist service and hence they are not keen. To work on removable dentures and won't participate in the EDAP. But for EHVS, any dentist can participate. So some dentists may just provide more general service. They will join the scheme as well. For the EDAP, it is under the uh community care program. So the fees imposed. Is low and we try to take care of the low income group in the underprivileged. So we have restrictions on the fees charged. Unlike the EHVS, it is not just for dental service and the fitting of dentures. The fees actually is also determined by the dentist. It's set between the dentist and the patient. So there is no. Community care element in it. So that's why it is understandable that the participation rate for EDAP is relatively low. Uh now I understand. Uh I have completed my questions, but if time permits, I will ask questions on behalf of Miss Carmen Ken. Uh Mister Look Chong Hong.
Thank you, Chairman. For the EDAP. I don't have any particular issue about it. But I just noticed that. Unlike the EHVS, the two schemes actually differ quite a bit. The EDAP is under the community care program and there is a fee. Schedule. Unlike the EHVS. Sorry, the government has been telling us that it is up to uh market forces. The fees are fixed according to market demand. So can we look at it from a different perspective in future? For the dental service under EHVS, can we also set a feature schedule for it?
Secretary. Well, Chairman, I think the concept of the two schemes differs. For the EHVS. Every elderly person would receive two thousand dollars per year. And they, if they go for primary healthcare service, they can have an extra five hundred dollars. So it is up to the elderly to decide. How to get service from the private sector. And we encourage them to go for primary healthcare service. If they go for. Clinics which charge them higher, they can decide whether to go or not. But for the EDAP, it is actually a program under the CCF. And we try to reimburse the fees item by item. So we don't give an amount of money to the elderly for them to choose the service. So the concept is different. For the um EDAP is a fitting of removal dentures for the low income group. So we have to fix the fees for that. But for EHVS. It is not necessarily used by the low income elderly and the elderly users can decide how to make use of the vouchers. Mister Look Chong Hong.
Uh Chairman, I have the question or rather a suggestion. This CCF program. Cater for the uh elderly who are underprivileged and low income and we provide them with oral healthcare. Scaling and polishing and checking. Uh can you just provide a letter service instead of uh the installation of removable dentures?
Secretary. That's exactly the change that we want to introduce by the latter half of this year. When the scheme was first rolled out, the. Users can only go for removable dentures. We will not give them an oral checkup or teeth extraction or polishing and scaling. So in a way, the four O scheme. Must involve removable denture and then we may provide scaling and polishing as a supplementary service. But by the. Later half of this year, we will change the scheme. We will expand it. So even if the elderly are not going for removable denture, they can also have. Polishing and scaling. Mister Look, well, thank you. Then I think the organization A should step up publicity. Because when we go to the different communities and meet the elderly people. Even though the secretary is saying that the participation rate of twenty percent is more or less up to expectation. And if we have a high participation rate, that means the teeth of our elderly people are not good. So you're not trying to go for a high participation rate. But since you now have an enhancement of the policy, you're going to expand the scope of service. I hope you will benefit more elderly people. And I hope organization A will be more proactive and step up publicity on the enhancements. Do you need a response? No, thank you. Next, Ms. Yong Hui Yan.
Well, Chairman, when I look at uh the flow chart on page fifty-four. I can see that when they submit an application and by the time they receive service, the. Audit has pointed out that you should encourage the users to make better use of the program of EDAP. And when vetting the uh eligibility, there should be some enhancement. I noticed that when the applicant submits an application. You can see that you will conduct the initial screening on eligibility and then you would also. Uh set up a reservation with the dentist, confirm appointment with the dentist. And then if we look at the list B, we can see that at the beginning, you don't provide them with list B. It is only after they have participated in the scheme, then they will be able to choose the dentist or the dental clinic that they like. So would it be better to enhance the flow? Why do you allow the participants to choose a dentist? Well, I am a duty lawyer and I know that the citizens cannot choose a lawyer. Because we just serve them by roster. Every day we have about five or six lawyers serving in the courts and the public. Do not have a choice on which uh lawyer to use. So is it because you allow them to indicate a preference? That's why the waiting time has been lengthened. And then also administratively, it will be more complicated. So how can we enhance the flow of the scheme? Uh to shorten the waiting time and then also to simplify the administrative procedures. And then also it would be better for you to conduct screening. I noticed that you're only doing verification uh at random. You're trying to see whether they are OLA recipients and whether they have received other services before. Like CSSA, can you make use of computer systems to enhance your work? And to identify the right service users. Actually, there are two different services. If they have benefited from other services beforehand, then. The EDAP will not cover them. So do you have a better system that you can allocate to this? Uh so that people will have a shorter waiting time. And then also. Uh the number of dentists to serve will be more evenly spread out. Well, a general response. Uh first is whether the applicant is an eligible applicant, for example, whether they meet the age requirement. And although also whether they meet the financial means requirements. Then we will move on for them to make an appointment with the dentist. Ms. Jung asked why we let the elderly choose a dentist. I think it is difficult to compare this service with the. Legal service because most of the members of the public don't have their own lawyer. But for dentist service or even if you go to a general doctor, this is a very personalized service. It is person to person. So we think we should allow the elderly people to have a choice. They may want to go to a dentist in the vicinity. Uh they may have more confidence in a particular dentist. So I will not compare this scheme. With the duty lawyer scheme.
Currently, we allow the elderly to choose the dentist of their preference. As to whether the patients can choose the dentist or the waiting time, I will defer to the deputy secretary. Mister Lee?
On the actual operation, we see that the elderly actually wants to choose their respective dentist. If they choose a particular dentist, maybe the waiting time is longer. And then we'll also let them know there may be another dentist with a shorter waiting time for appointment. So we'll let the users know as well. Now we are talking about the removable dentures service. It is not a very urgent service. So the elderly may choose to go to a dentist with a shorter waiting time or they want to go to the dentist of their choice, even for a longer waiting time. And we don't think that that is a bottleneck created by the indication for preference of dentist.
Next question on paragraph four two eight and four two nine, the outstanding cases for the claims of payment. We noticed that about four percent of the cases, the waiting time has been over one point six years for the reimbursements of claims. And also, Organisation A has not spelled out or recorded the follow-up actions and the reasons for the overpayment. So what measures does the government have in mind to shorten the time for making the payment of claims? Deputy Secretary, Mister Lee? Chairman, we actually like to thank the audit for pointing out this issue. For these outstanding cases with a longer time, it is actually accounting for less than one percent of the total number of cases. Nonetheless, we have been liaising with Organisation A as to how we can enhance the procedures and arrangements so that there will be a clear deadline for each round of submission for claims from the dentist. We will impose a deadline. If they don't make the claims, then they may have to wait for a longer time and we will remind them again. But after the reminder, then we will only process the claim forms with the adequate information. For those with outstanding information, after the deadline, we won't process them. So we want to speed up the timing for making the claims from the dentist. Miss Yong?
Well, a last question, a more general one. How can we encourage more participants, uh, dentists to participate in the elderly dental assistance program? We noticed that by twenty twenty four, you will have an enhancement and you want to benefit another eighty eight thousand elderly people. We are now having aging of population. Now, only about thirty eight percent of the dentists participate in this program. So how will the government entice more dentists to join the program in future? Secretary for Health?
Thank you, Miss Yong. As I have pointed out before, the thirty eight percent participation rate is based on the current program and it is confined to the installation of removable dentures. And also, it is a program under the C C F. So the fees to be charged have been fixed. We can see that there are more high-class dental clinics and they may not want to join this program. For the latter half of this year, we will expand the program. It will not be confined to removable dentures. And we anticipate that the number of dentists who will participate will increase. We will step up publicity and we will work with Organisation A so that they can let their members know that there are changes to this program and they can provide other dental services other than removable dentures. But I want to emphasize that this is a C C F program. So unlike the elderly voucher scheme, the number of dentists participating may not be on par for the two schemes. But we expect that the percentage will be more than the current percentage of thirty eight.
Thank you. Any further follow-up questions? No, thank you. So Mister Lo, you want to raise questions on behalf of Miss Carmen Ken? Yes, Chairman. This is a question from Miss Carmen Ken. It is on paragraph four point thirty one on page sixty five. She noticed that the E D A P has been rolled out. And since a certain year, and Organisation A has all along been the implementing agent. And most of the dentists in Hong Kong are members of Organisation A. That's why they have not asked another organization to implement the program. So Miss Ken is concerned that Organisation A actually has the natural advantage of monopolizing the program. She is concerned how the administration can take the initiative under the F S A and how can you enhance your bargaining power or negotiating power? Secretary for Health?
Thank you, Mister Lo. Well, we haven't listed the name of Organisation A. But I want to say that Organisation A is not a commercial organization. It is a professional body. It actually comprises most of the dentists in Hong Kong. Most of the dentists in Hong Kong are its members. Actually, I would say that I don't have any choice other than Organisation A. Actually, they represent the whole professional organization in Hong Kong. But I hope you would appreciate that Organisation A is not just an ordinary commercial organization. It actually represents the dentists in Hong Kong. It's a professional body.
Mister Lo? Chairman, I understand that, but Miss Ken has two further questions. On page fifty seven, paragraph four point one one B, she said that since September twenty fifteen, the elderly program, E D A P, has been expanded. And the recipients of E D A P cannot be benefited from the outreach service. And she noticed that for the elderly who have benefited from this scheme, the administration has not conducted any random checking on whether the applicant had previously benefited from the O D C P. And then H H B said that it has conducted checks in twenty twenty four and has noticed some ineligible users. So she would like to know the number of the ineligible cases and also what measures will be taken by the administration to address them. Deputy Secretary, Mister Adely?
Well, Chairman, we have mentioned that in January twenty twenty four to April twenty twenty four, we have conducted twenty rounds of checks. And we found that eleven out of the three hundred ninety four service recipients have benefited from the outreach dental service before, but they have not received removable dentures.
Mister Louis Lo? Last question from Miss Carmen Ken. It is on page sixty two, four point two five paragraphs. In twenty eighteen nineteen to twenty twenty two twenty three, there are some dentists who have withdrawn from the program. And it has increased from one to eighteen. And then in twenty three, twenty three twenty four, it dropped to seven, the number of dentists withdrawing. So for the dentists who have withdrawn from the E D A P, they have to promote, provide a notification form to the project office. But they do not have to give the reasons for withdrawal. So she wants to know what is the cumulative number of dentists who have withdrawn from the scheme? Well, since the reasons for withdrawal do not need to be spelled out in a notification form, then it is not beneficial for the running of the program. Would the administration consider asking Organisation A to collect the reasons for withdrawal from the dentist so that they can try to think of measures to enhance the participation rates of dentists?
Mister Adely? Thank you. Concerning the number enrolled, the number of dentists enrolled in E D A P, there is a net growth. In two thousand twenty three, there are eight hundred eleven dentists participating in the E D A P. Now, the latest figure is eight hundred seventy four. So there has been a net increase in the number of dentists participating. Concerning the reasons why some dentists withdrew. First, the number of withdrawal is on the low side. And also, from our experience, many dentists withdrew because of their personal reasons. They simply don't have time to provide services under the program or they retired from the trade. But the trend is there is an overall increase. Professor Lo? If you look at table twenty two, in two thousand and twenty three, there are eight hundred eleven dentists participating. Now, like Mister Adely said, we now have eight hundred forty seven. Now, in two thousand twenty three, there were seven dentists who withdrew. So that's just one percent of the total number. In every industry, there is bound to be attrition either because of immigration or retirement. Now, one percent withdrawal is very low. I don't see why this is an issue of concern. Mister Lo, I'm just asking the questions on behalf of Miss Carmen Ken. She has other questions as well, but I think those questions are similar to questions asked before, so I will skip them. So that's all the questions from Miss Carmen Ken. Thank you, Mister Lo. Members? Any more questions on part four? Deputies, Deputy Chairman, Vice Chairman, Mister Po Jie, any any supplements? Now, there being no further questions concerning chapter two of report number eighty two of the Director of Audits, we have completed public hearing for it. Mister Adam Wong?
Thank you. I have a follow-up question on part two. Can I? May I? Going back to part two, just a very general question. It's a question on the reply given by the administration. I will allow it, please. About the students' dental care program. According to the administration, there is a declining birth rate in Hong Kong. We used to have one hundred thousand students each year. Now, last year, there were only thirty five thousand. So for the resources freed up, where have they gone? Now, there is a part in the report saying that we have some thirty percent vacancy rate in the dental department. Doctor Lam?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mister Wong. Yes, the birth rate has declined. So the number of students participating under the Students' Dental Care Program has dropped. In two thousand twenty one, there were three hundred thirty six thousand and ninety nine students. In two thousand twenty four, there were only three hundred thirteen thousand students participating. At the same time, the number of dentists and ancillary dental workers have seen a higher vacancy rate. So the manpower has been, the manpower situation has been tense, but the workload is still high. Now, despite the decrease of number in both sides, the ratio per den, the ratio of dentists per student has increased. Now, in the first half of the year, the ratio between dentists and students was one to one, thirteen thousand. For dental therapists, it was one to one thousand four hundred. Comparing with the figure in two thousand twenty one in the same period, at the time, the ratio between dentists and students was one to eleven thousand. For dental therapist, dental therapists and students, it was one to one thousand four hundred twenty seven. So generally speaking, the ratio of dentists to student has decreased. It means that the workload for each dentist has even increased. No more questions. Thank you. So there being no further questions on the reports, the public hearing today is concluded concerning chapter two of report number eighty two of the Director of Audits. So I will invite the administration to provide written supplements concerning questions asked by member if necessary. So after the work is concluded of the, for the reports, we will submit a report to the council. So I thank the Audit Commission and also the government officials who attended today's public hearing. Thank you.